In the absence of Treasurer Wagner, I need a motion to nominate a board member to serve as Treasurer for Tim with Assistant Treasurer this performing, performing the practical business of the trade. If we roll call according to time, I have to leave White Rossky. Second, this devotion in second, Mr. Rossky serves as Treasurer for Tim. All favors and by my say aye, aye, propose. This White Rossky is elected to serve as Treasurer for Tim. This is forming these call rules. President, President, President. Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the by agenda and to consider the amended resolution. Is there a second? I need favors and by my say aye, aye, propose. Thank you. Thank you. We begin with our hearing of the public. I want to read, I have an opening statement.
To bring to fruition and close out on this process involving FCC's request. I want to say it is, it has been, while it's been very strenuous on us, it's been a very rewarding experience for all of us. First of all, we didn't ask for this. This is not our primary charge. Our charge is educating children and we kind of got pulled into this. But again, this team worked hard as a unit to do its due diligence in making sure that we made the best decision for the district and our kids. On January 22nd CPS Board first received word from FC Cincinnati's President and General Manager Jeff Birding regarding its interest in building a partnership with CPS that has culminated in a proposal to build a new FC Cincinnati Stadium in the West End. We've held many public meetings on this topic and heard from a variety of stakeholders throughout the Cincinnati community, both in support of and opposition to this partnership. And tonight, the Board intends to vote on a proposed resolution that could permit a land agreement between FC Cincinnati and CPS. I also want to thank the community. Part of the reason, the good part about this is that we realize that there's a strong voice out there and everybody sitting at this table values community engagement. We've learned a lot from the process and we plan to continue to expand our community engagement efforts as a result of this. Last month, the Board of Education approved a resolution that established our conditions and our expectations for a potential FC Cincinnati Stadium in the West End. In that resolution, we stated clearly that we expected an agreement to follow the Board's policies in the construction of a new Stargell Stadium, including utilization of local and minority business suppliers, and it included a community benefits agreement and an FCC-CPS partnership for academic, athletic, and employment opportunities. And finally, it included a written commitment from FC Cincinnati to pay its fair share of taxes according to the 1999 agreement. Our format tonight will be to again, hold a hearing of the public from those in attendance tonight. After the hearing of the public, the Board will consider the proposed resolution before us that says that FCC will build a new Stargell Stadium in accordance with CPS policies, establish a partnership with CPS for expanded academic internships and employment opportunities, enter into a community benefits agreement with the Coalition of Community Organizations and Residents prior to June 30th, 2018, make a payment in lieu of taxes in line with the District's 1999 tax abatement agreement with the City of Cincinnati. FC Cincinnati proposes to make an upfront lump sum payment to CPS based on the projected value of the stream of payments. Should the resolution be approved by vote of the Board and once the stadium is constructed and appraised by the County Auditor, the parties will engage in a reconciliation process based on the appraised value. On behalf of the Board, I want to once again thank our community for its participation in moving us forward in this very sensitive matter. With that, we will now move into the hearing of the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak and Mrs. Torek will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come down to the podium to speak. And what I'm going to do is call you in groups of three so we can kind of move folks along and you, if all the, all the, the three, the three people in the group can come down and we can get you through pretty quickly. The first three speakers, Tom Walter, Ron Fresh, Contina Davis.
Good evening, Board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. For the past eight years up in, or as recently as two years ago, eight years prior to that, I was the President of the Development Fund of the West End. I was the founding president and we established a fund to help the West End in a number of ways. We sponsored the Hayes Porter Robotics Program as recently as a couple of years ago, a number of beautification projects, and also a number of things to help the young people in the community. And I, I think that this FC Cincinnati investment that's being made in the West End is something that, you know, a number of us that have been involved in aspects of the West End community never thought was going to be possible and really think that it's going to, you know, bring a life into the community that, that has long been needed. And I know there are people that, that don't agree with that, but being on this Development Fund Board for all these years and talking to people that were making proposals to our group, I, I know there are a number of people that are really anxious to improve the lives of themselves and their families in the West End. And I really encourage you to support this. I think it'll be a very good, good change for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Excuse my throat. My name is Ron Fresh. My wife and I have been residents of OTR since December of 2000. While our street is one of the last two streets in OTR, we are also on the northeast border of the West End. My wife and I have been members of the OTR Community Council and the West End Community Council. We have mentored at Taft High School girls' basketball team since 2002. Over the past 18 years, I have witnessed countless times when projects have been proposed that would improve the communities mentioned. The projects included the Washington Park renovation, the moving of the drop-in center from OTR to the brand-new facilities in Queensgate, the development of restaurants, businesses, offices, rental properties, occupied properties in, in the OTR. In virtually every incident of proposed improvements, a group of people, many of whom are present tonight, have voiced opposition for a variety of reasons. Fortunately, those projects proceeded. We now see the vibrant, growing OTR that has been recognized as one of the most desirable neighborhoods in the country. We're here tonight to discuss a private investment of hundreds of millions of dollars in the West End community, including tens of millions of dollars to the public, Cincinnati Public Schools, and hundreds of thousands of dollars to the West End Community Organizations. The same opposing voices are being heard again.
Thank you.
Good evening. I've been at this podium a few times telling you all that I was taught nobody's going to make a decision for us, about us, without us. But yet, everybody in this city keep doing that. Everybody keep leaving out the people that live in this community that y'all want to put this massive stadium in. I hear all across the country, people talking about, well, 30,000 seats, that's not that bad, that's not that bad, but in a residential area, that's devastating. That is devastating. I keep hearing everybody talk about the improvement to the West End, but I have yet to hear people talk about the history in the West End, the Derek Turnbows, the, there, there's a gentleman funeral I went to a couple months ago by the name of Jemai. And Mr. Jemai's mother is the oldest resident in our development in the West End. And his mother, we didn't know what a star he was or what an asset he was to our community till we got to that funeral. We learned in that funeral, this man was an accomplished musician, not just in Cincinnati, but across this country. We're not talking about that man. We're not talking about the countless children that are going to the Air Force serving this country. We're not talking about the countless children that have made it out of the West End. We're not taking none of those into consideration because all we see is a dollar and a building. What about them kids? What about the people who have already vested in the West End? We do want investment, don't get us wrong. We welcome investment, but we don't welcome it on the back of the residents in the West End. We don't. We don't. We don't. It would be easy for me to come up here and say that I don't like growth because that would be a lie. But what I'm ashamed of, and it actually brought tears to my eyes on Friday, is the fact that we have people and positions come to little people and say, "I'm going to make it better for you." And that never happens. That never happens. We keep going over and over, we've been through so many different developments, quote-unquote, as the city done through on the West End, that have yet to come to pass. And here we are again with another development. Y'all talk about academics and jobs. I'm sorry, I'm not raising my child to be a food vendor. I'm raising my child to be the president. I'm raising my child and my grandchild to be proud of the West End. No FCC.
Thank you. The next, the next three, Carol Brown, James Mims, Marlena Brookfield.
Hello. I understand about plans and everything, but let me tell you, the most prominent plan we have in the world, and it supersedes everything, is called the Bible, God's Word. And what it says is, and Matthew 16 and 26, "What profit a man to gain the world and lose his soul? And what would you give for your soul?" See, and I'm not saying that this was an easy decision for everyone. And I almost ran for school board myself years ago. I've done it all, but this is about the children, simply. See, and the job is for you as a board, you set policy. And it's about motivating, about bringing our kids to a place where they can be successful in life, not constantly seeing where something is going to be torn down. All they're seeing in the West End constantly for years now, for over 30 years, is things being taken away, torn down. What is going to be given for this agreement that is being made? Is Taft going to stay? A battle that we have fought for years to keep Taft there. When they wanted to give them automotive, diesel, and cosmetology, we fought to put ITT there. And we want to see it, we want to see them go further. We want to see them be the Bill Gates in everyone. And they deserve that right, instead of worrying about what's going to come about, are we going to be loose cause? The question now, will we even still have a Taft High School? See, because as this stadium come, they will need more and more room. Is there going to be a guarantee that with this? I understand about taxes, but taxes cannot make up for a human being. See, them buildings will fall. They're made of wood, bricks, prefabricated. Our children are made of flesh and blood, and it'll go on until there's no longer any breath in their bodies. And me, cause it's not over to the fat lady scene. And I'm one of them, and I don't have no problem with it, cause I'm, I'm proud of me. And this is what I expect for every one of our kids. I want to think that you took these positions up there for the same reason, about our children, not about a stadium, not about what the city wants, not about money. See, because it's going to change again, and I can't believe that over the years, the monies that's going to be promised, is going to be made for the promises when you swore, took that oath, that you are going to serve our community and our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank the soldiers, I want to say thank you to the Board. You soldiers, thank you all. I didn't say that yet. Well, thank you for your service. You took advantage of our service to the country, like in education. Thank you. You're a positive American. Yeah, very supportive, man.
Getting close.
Getting close.
Getting close.
Okay.
Microphone's right here.
I hear. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. How y'all doing? My name is James Demeter Vett Mims. I am a disabled, honorably discharged, proud American Vietnam Combat Veteran. I come out of the West End, I learned one thing, that Freedom Center is setting directly in the path that the black Americans who came out of the South, the grandchildren, the great-grandchildren of African slaves, that's the only path they had when they came to Cincinnati. And they took them here, and they put those people in that parcel called the West End. And that's where those people had to live. That's where they had babies. Our great and great-grandfathers and grandmothers raised us there. And they raised up doctors, lawyers, politicians. They raised up world-renowned, world-renowned athletes out of that West End because that's where y'all gave us to raise our families. Now, me as a soldier, when they came to me, they said you were drafted during the riots. I'm a proud black man. I said, "I had a Molotov in one hand and a brick in the other. Had to make a decision, either throw that brick and Molotov or go serve my country." I believe in America because I came out of the West End from what them people taught us, those African people, mama, grandma, grandpa. So I went to serve, and I lived to come home to tell the stories of those brave white men, black men, Americans, who we served side by side. And sometimes it was shoulder to shoulder, but we served together. And I come out of the West End where people like me, people like you, were raised by old folks. I want to say this, I can't imagine how dare you could be so hell-bent on tearing that land up, ripping the pipes, the sewers, the gutters, the waterlands, tearing down Taft High School where doctors, lawyers, politicians, great men of renowned, world-renowned people came out of, blacks who achieved something. How can you dare vote to have a kickball stadium put down there for them dead folks, our spirits of our grandfathers, even some of y'all come out of? I'm a proud American, and I say again, we soldiers, thank you people. We thank y'all for you went to school, you learned, got an education, you done something with your lives. We thank y'all. When y'all say, "Thank you for your service," we say, "Thank you for taking advantage, for doing something right in this country." I fought with those men. I was called a nigger then, I called a nigger now, but I don't care. That don't bother me, cause I come out of the West End where people were proud. Their momma didn't work, come home with a few dollars in their hands, got off the bus after working for you white people out there raising your kids. They came home to raise us, to cook and wash our foods. So I'm just letting you know, if you take a vote tonight to let these people put a kickball stadium down there, tear down, blue, tear down what? I'm sorry. Tear down Taft High School, may God help you. Thank you for letting me talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again. Just have something that I had to get off my chest. It is undeniable that the millions of dollars this deal would, in theory, add to our budget would be beneficial to our district and our children, but I'm deeply troubled and suspicious. I worry that a yes vote means our children, and especially our children of color, who make up the majority of our students, will see that no matter how loudly they speak up, their voices will not be heard. I worry that it will leave a bitter taste in their mouths and the mouths of other district stakeholders, one that will linger for years through election cycles and school levies. I worry about the effects displacement will have on student achievement. And I'm worried that in spite of the earlier resolution requiring a community benefits agreement to be made before entering into this deal with FCC, this is not going to be held to. I don't see how or why we can even be talking about a vote when the CBA isn't already in place. So I don't envy any of you having to make this decision. As President Jones has said, there will be people who are happy with this, with this decision and people who are not. So I'll end with this, a community's voice matters, and don't let this be another brick in the wall of Cincinnati's racial divide.
Our, our next three, Katie Hoffman, Ralph Moon, Peter Haynes.
Good evening, Board members. I have read the proposed agreement between FC Cincinnati and CPS. I understand that CPS Board needs to make sure that we receive the tax dollars as a part of the 1999 agreement. That's good. So I see the land swap, the tax dollars, and the details on who and what will build this new Stargell Stadium, that's good. However, we have a moral dilemma. Jeff Birding said here and in news releases that if the West End didn't want FC, they wouldn't build there. I'll say that again. Jeff Birding said here and in a news release, the West End didn't want them, they wouldn't go there. I was at the West End Community Council meeting when they voted no to FC Cincinnati. Overwhelmingly voted no. Some say then, and even some Board members said, "But then why did they agree for a community benefits agreement?" Well, they have been run over in the past, and they believed that they were going to be run over again in the future. And look what's happened. They're going to get run over. They were right. Behind closed doors with Cincinnati City Council, deals have been made. So, we wind up now, if you pass this tonight without a defined community benefits agreement, you're wrong. Unless this community benefits agreement absolutely spells out the accountability for FC Cincinnati and the recourse that FC, that the West End will have if FC falls down, then the only thing that they're looking at is another whole cadre of false promises. That's what they have seen in the past, again and again. You've heard community people say it again and again and again, false promises, false promises, false promises. They're never following through. Now, another thing that was said to you by FC, and I live in Mount Auburn, so I get to watch this on a weekly basis, they made the comment that, "Oh, FC Cincinnati, our fans don't tailgate." No, they don't tailgate like the Bengals do, but they certainly do party ahead of time. On Saturday, starting at four o'clock, and the game was at seven, the whole area around UC was already traffic snarled. People were meeting at Mecklenburg Gardens and drinking and hiking their way to the stadium. So don't tell me it doesn't cause traffic and safety issues for our children before and after those games. And that's your job.
Madam President, Madam Superintendent, Board Members, and the general public, I'm speaking as the grandson of Reverend Arthur Collins who passed a new Prospect Baptist Church. I'm the son of Ralph L. Moon Senior who ran two businesses off of Dayton Street. One was a construction business because when he came to Cincinnati in 1941, a black man couldn't belong to the Cement Finishers Union. Later on, he developed the security guard business and funeral escort service because sometimes white police officers wasn't concerned about the dignity of a black funeral procession being escorted to a cemetery. But tonight, I'm here in the capacity of speaking for the Robert A. Taft High School Educational Foundation. Many of the residents and the people who have their heart in the community have already spoken. I am with them in sentiment, but I also understand something about free enterprise in America. The foundation has engaged the Birding people twice. enterprise in America. The foundation has engaged the Byrdington people twice. I am encouraged that they are willing to support the foundation. And we're the only entity that has approached them who's not begging for resources but looking for a partnership. Let me make myself clear. The foundation has resources. I'm asking the community, I know you don't like certain things, but please don't sell yourself out for a jump rope team or some other social service kind of money that may get thrown at you. What we're trying to do with the foundation, stadium or no stadium, is to create the foundation to serve the needs of the school and the students who attend Taft High School. Let me make myself perfectly clear in my position. The other thing I want to say is, we've already met with the superintendent, and I want to publicly thank her for her support. I want to thank Mr. Miles, if he's here, because there was a problem in the audio system at Taft High School, but it was mildly corrected when you had the open board meeting there. That was because of the thrust that we had to improve that. And there's a whole bunch of things wrong with Taft High School. So my comment is simply will be curtailed with this. We are trying to get resources for the best interest of the school and the students. Final case in point, I went to a basketball game last year, and due to open enrollment, people who have kids who live in the West End are sending their kids somewhere else. Only one boy on the basketball team was from the neighborhood. That is absolutely a disgrace to the memory of Taft High School with all of the profound athletes they put into professional football. So I'm only asking that whatever vote that you take, that you entertain my comments this evening about what I have to bring to you.
Thank you.
With that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the Board of Education, my name is Peter Haynes. I live in Over the Rhine. And this evening, I'm speaking on behalf of the Over the Rhine Community Council. On March 23rd, the Community Council passed a motion that opposes the proposal of FC Cincinnati to build a soccer stadium in the West End. We feel that we have been ignored by FC Cincinnati, even though Over the Rhine and the West End are neighbors. The dividing line between the two communities is Central Parkway. There is a diverse and highly dense neighborhood right within 200 feet of the proposed location of the stadium. And yet, on three occasions, we have reached out to FC Cincinnati, asking them to engage with this community that's going to be affected by that stadium proposal. And our letter inviting them to appear at that March 23rd Community Council meeting, inviting them to speak and present their proposal, was ignored by them. On another occasion, we sent them a letter, sending to them our list of issues and questions that we wanted them to answer in regards to how their stadium proposal would affect the Over the Rhine Community Council. Again, silence. A third attempt to engage them also went unanswered. Silence came from them. So, when I appeared before you last, you talked about how you all were taking the lead on community engagement and citizen engagement, and it was time for the city of Cincinnati to catch up. And I wanted to extend to you, as I was thinking, what I would say tonight. Kudos for taking the lead, especially reflecting upon the resolution that you adopted on March the 21st. This resolution, however, has importantly shifted the timing of when the community benefits agreement will be executed. I believe your March 21st resolution said the community benefits agreement must be executed before any agreement on a land swap with FC Cincinnati. All leverage is lost if you agree to the deal and then say, "And we'll come back to the community benefits agreement." It's like going into a car dealership and saying, "I'll pay the sticker price and here's a check, and now let's negotiate the price." It just doesn't work that way. You all know that it's an important consideration, the timing of agreements, as well as the terms. What's been presented, I believe, in your resolution tonight should be opposed by you. If you don't agree to make the deal conditioned upon the community benefits agreement, then it's a sad statement about how you really feel about the impact upon the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next three speakers, Michelle Dillingham, Stefan Pryor, David Brenner. Is Michelle Dillingham here?
She's not here.
Okay. Stefan? Oh, okay. Thank you.
So I come to you today.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Are you on the?
For Michelle, speaking for Michelle.
Um...
So I come to you today from the Community Church.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Gray.
Of Cincinnati.
You are not Michelle Dillingham.
No, but we did, they did that before at the last meeting, where they switched the speaker, where they allowed the speaker to speak in lieu of them.
This, this, my understanding is that Michelle was going to be here. So if Michelle comes, Michelle gets the right to speak at the end.
Okay.
So we are, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But we cannot. Thank you.
But you don't want to hear my three minutes?
No, no, sir, we can't.
I got it all prepared and everything.
Sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Just say no on behalf of Ralph.
Stefan Pryor?
Y'all ready? Y'all ready? All right. Don't vote on this. I just thought about it. It's going to be a lot of trucks, a bunch of trucks coming through down there, unorganized. They said something about community agreement about jobs. Y'all remember the Horseshoe Casino? They had a deal, but they wind up changing the name and they reneged on the deal. This always happen. It's a repeat. They always do this. No real talk, y'all. We've been living this long. Y'all got degrees. Y'all been seeing these games they been doing for years. But y'all gotta focus on the logo. The logo. The logo of the soccer. The lion, the crown, the sword, got a ball in between the sword. Now, the lion come from the arms of the House of Nisa. The sword in the lion's paw by the soccer ball comes from the co-arms of the State General of the Republic of the United Province. It's a corporation brand. The crown referred to the royal status of the House of Ointz. They even got a bar over Newport, the House of Ointz, over there. The designated House of Ointz Nisa founded in 1544. Taking y'all to school right now, y'all didn't know this. The House of Ointz Nisa branch, the branch of Europe, European, House of Nisa, had played a central role in politics and government. That's the games right there, brother. Politics and government. Yeah, they want that location so they can take over the politics and the government. So they can bring all the people back down, so they can take over the politics and the government. I'd be done. I done found this out. I ain't even go to school for this one. But hold on. And the government, the government of Neverland and Europe, especially the Dutch Republic, as known as Republic of the Seven United Neverland. Y'all remember the sword? In the letter of January 1565, Prince William of Ointz explained the significance of the motto, "Unity makes strength." In black communities, we don't got no unity. Only the unity they got is the soccer. So that's the unity that's coming, that's going to be voting. For y'all out y'all seats in a minute, if y'all here that long. But, but the motto was, "I will maintain a virtue noble." I ain't gonna read all that now, but Jesus spoke on the sword in Matthew's 1034, Bible school now. Do not suppose that I have come to bring peace to earth, just the sword that the lion got in the hand, to the earth. I do not come to bring peace but a sword. So imagine the sword that's coming in the urban neighborhoods. Don't care who they slaughter. Don't care who be hungry. But y'all should care about that money they be paying y'all up under the table. Get that money back, all right?
Mr. Pryor?
I love you, know you can do about it.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to start off by applauding you for sticking to your guns and rejecting the initial offers from FCC. These were insulting and giving a short deadline was a clear indication they were not acting in good faith. It showed that you are looking out for the financial needs of the district. After reviewing the terms of the deal released on Friday, it appears to meet the financial requirements laid out by the Board. There's a lot of good in this agreement, and there's some areas for abuse. And I hope that you'll keep that in mind as you examine it. I'm encouraged that the terms require that a community benefits agreement be in place by June 30th of this year. Let's make sure that the CBA is clear, enforceable, and equitable for the West End. A lot of promises were made, and you have a voice in making sure they were kept. Next, this entire process has highlighted the need to seriously review the abatement deal with the city due to expire next year. By your own admission, CPS is losing money every year because of the current agreement. Now, on the eve of its expiration, I encourage you to learn from experience and ensure that the district and our communities are well-served by the future contract. Let's state the obvious. Public education is under attack at both the national and state level. If that weren't enough, the road to get to an agreement here highlights the continued efforts by those with money to avoid paying their share of taxes in the name of economic development. Education is the great equalizer, but it takes financial resources to make it work. Tax dollars are an investment in our future, and our students are the one proven source of continued economic development. You are our last line of defense against those that would mortgage our future for personal gain now. I am encouraged by the engagement of our community, whether we agree or not. I started coming to these meetings before declaring my candidacy last year and have never seen a turnout like the past few months. If this many people are showing up for a Board of Education meeting to speak, you can clearly see that we, the people, think this is important. In the broader context, our youth are coming into their own, finding they do have a voice, and making sure they are registered to vote. This isn't the only important issue, and maybe the next time the community comes out en masse to speak, it's about the great job you are doing instead of talking about their displeasure. The times, they are a-changing. And testifying in these forms is not the only way of making our voices heard. I hope you're listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speakers, there are, I'm going to call the last four, Josh Spring, John Walter, Denny Dellinger, Julie Sellers.
My name is Josh Spring. I am the Executive Director of the Greater Cincinnati Homeless Coalition. For a couple of months now, masses of people have been attending your meetings to tell you to say no to this stadium, person after person after person. And there's a resolution in front of you that would say yes to the stadium. And I've got a couple of points I want to make about that resolution in particular. Your point, by June 30, FC Cincinnati agrees that it will enter into a written community benefits agreement with the Coalition of Community Organizations and Residents in the Neighborhood. One, the group in any neighborhood is the Community Council. It doesn't say that. And I wonder why. It might be because you know the Community Council would say no. Two, that's one-sided. That gives the power to FC Cincinnati. What if the Coalition of Community Organizations and Residents in the Neighborhood won't enter an agreement with them? Right? Why is all the power in FC's hands in that statement in your resolution? What if the neighborhood continues to say no? Second, in Over the Rhine, we've lost 2,300 units of affordable housing based on what people call development and progress. And that's what this resolution would bring to the West End. The fact is that the money FC Cincinnati says they will pay to the school district equates to a couple hundred children a year receiving education. We've had far more than a couple hundred children displaced from Over the Rhine. One of the biggest differences, if you walk down Race Street near Washington Park, is you don't see kids playing anymore. You don't. That's the big, that's a huge difference there. I want to point out what one of the earlier speakers said when he was charting off successes in Over the Rhine. One of the successes that he charted off was the moving of the Drop-In Center. Why was that a success, in his opinion, for the neighborhood? I can't tell you why, but I know that folks for years fought to just remove the image of the Drop-In Center from that neighborhood. And that was charted as a success, the removal of people. And so I want you to know, if you vote for this resolution, that is the side that you are choosing. That is, that is what the supporters are saying. This will bring growth. And the growth that we've seen is the removal of people.
Thank you for taking your time out tonight to hear the public. I believe that, I'm John Walter, I live in Over the Rhine. I believe the overall direction of CPS is closely tied in to the overall direction of the economy of Cincinnati. I believe that MLS soccer will be positive to the direction of Cincinnati's economy, the business climate, the general business climate, the retention of the young graduates from Xavier, UC, Miami. I think MLS is a huge draw for the youth, for the, for the young people. And the businesses in the urban core, downtown, the West End, Over the Rhine, I think it's got to help those businesses. It'll create jobs. A lot of businesses are struggling during the weekdays. I think, I think it'll really infuse a lot of money into the urban economy, helping everyone. The economic growth, I think, is the best way to fund schools in a sustainable manner. As we know, real estate taxes have gone up recently, and that's totally understandable. As the economy grows, though, it'll lessen the need for the increase in real estate taxes. Real estate taxes going up, I'm a landlord, I know it. It affects everyone. It affects tenants, it affects, you know, young people trying to buy a house, it affects older people trying to stay in a house. Real estate taxes are a huge proponent of housing costs. And it, and it, you know, it makes housing much less affordable. A rising economy will reduce the need for those increases. I was at the, I wanted to speak also to the I was at the, um, I wanted to speak also to the, um, opposition by the Over the Rhine Council. I live in Over the Rhine. My neighborhood, I actually circulated a petition, 96 people out of 102 signed it in favor of FC. That's in Over the Rhine. The Over the Rhine Council voted 20 to 7. Granted, the council is the, theoretically, the voice, but, um, just wanted to say that. I've also seen, over the last 20 years, in Over the Rhine, there's been a lot of opposition to market rate development. And, um, I, uh, I, I think market rate development, it creates more real estate taxes for the schools, creates more jobs, and, um, I just think it all kinda has to work together. I was at the Taft Public Hearing, and, uh, the moderator kept saying, "This is about the kids." I totally agree, it's about the kids. This one paragraph, that FC Cincinnati agrees to construct the new Stargel Stadium, costs $10 million. I think that's a community benefits agreement in itself. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Denny Dellinger. I'm an Over the Rhine resident and homeowner. I'm not really much of a sports fan, but, um, I think this soccer stadium would be a really good idea and bring a lot of good benefits to the West End and Over the Rhine, and I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Sellers?
I'm not speaking.
You're not speaking? Okay, thank you. No, sir. No, sir. Mr. Gregg, you got here after the time limit cut off. No, I, we did not allow people to speak. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. We only have one resolution, um, in this agenda item to vote on, and, um, we're going to present it, but before we do, and this is something that we don't ordinarily do, but I think for all practical purposes, and it's very important, that you hear as well from our administration. And Superintendent Mitchell, we are asking if you and your staff, whoever you deem appropriate, to, um, give your opinion about the status of things as they are right now in terms of the work that's been done and, um, any additional things that are tasks that need to be worked out, um, and perhaps answer the question as to whether or not FCC has met what we expected.
Thank you. So I do have an update for the board to be able to really lay out the timeline of what has happened since our last meeting, and then our General Counsel, Dan Hoang, will come up and he will present a summary to the board as well. So on March the 21st, the board unanimously passed a resolution setting forth the condition that would be required to enter into a land exchange with FC Cincinnati. And then on April the 7th, 2nd, I'm sorry, Jeff Burding invited the Treasurer, the General Counsel, myself, uh, to a meeting to discuss a proposed, uh, proposal, revised proposal consistent with the terms of the board's resolution that was passed earlier. On April the 4th, the administration summarized the revised proposal to the Board of Education in executive session, and then the revised proposal was well-received by the board, and FC was asked to put that proposal in writing. On April the 5th, CPS received and began to receive FC's written proposal and its revision. On April the 6th, CPS announced that it had received the revised proposal, summarized it for the public, and advised that it would be holding a special meeting Tuesday, April the 10th. At this time, I'd like to invite our General Counsel to provide a summary of FC's proposal to CPS.
Good evening. You've asked me to briefly summarize the revised terms in the FC Cincinnati proposal that we received last week. All these terms were in the written proposal that we released publicly on Friday. Uh, to start, FC agrees to build a new Stargel Stadium across from Taft High School at an anticipated cost of $10 million. Uh, we talked with FC Cincinnati today. The anticipated cost is exclusive of the cost that FC Cincinnati will need to expend to acquire the land for the stadium in the first place. That's estimated at approximately 3.5 million. And then the stadium cost will be an additional $10 million. Uh, they've retained Michael Schuster Architects, that's an architect that we've used also, uh, to prepare some renderings and early estimates of, of the stadium, and they estimate a cost of 9.9 million. But again, CPS will provide input on the design elements for the new stadium before it's finalized. Uh, the new Stargel Stadium will be constructed in accordance with the Board of Education's policies, including its commitment to economic inclusion and contracting with local and minority suppliers. There'll be a partnership, uh, FC, uh, for educational benefits. FC Cincinnati will establish a partnership with CPS for expanded academic, internship, and employment opportunities for CPS students. Uh, there's a lengthy description of the payments in lieu of taxes that FC Cincinnati has agreed to. They've agreed to do pilot payments, that's payments in lieu of taxes, equal to 25% of the property tax liability on a new FCC stadium without a property tax abatement. That's consistent with the 1999 agreement that this district has with the City of Cincinnati. Uh, in the years prior to the opening of the FC stadium, FC will hold the district harmless by paying the property taxes on the current valuation of the properties. That's estimated at about $70,000 per year. In fiscal year 19, FC will pay CPS a lump sum advance payment equal to the pilots, the payments in lieu of taxes, that would be due in the first 10 years of the stadium occupancy. That's based on a projected $175 million stadium valuation with standard depreciation and net present value formulas built into the upfront payment. Uh, this upfront payment is estimated to add a close to $10 million. However, after the stadium construction, that's expected in 2021, the Hamilton County Auditor will perform and conduct its appraisal of the stadium, the valuation, and any adjustments to the schedule, the 25% will be payable in year 11 after stadium occupancy. Also, in, starting in year 11, FC Cincinnati will make annual payments based on the property valuation of the FCC stadium each year, consistent with the amounts that would be due under the 1999 agreement. With respect to a community benefits agreement, uh, FC agrees to enter into a community benefits agreement with the Coalition of Community Organizations and Residents prior to June 30, 2018. You also asked me to follow up with FC Cincinnati regarding their process and the process that they would follow, uh, for creating a community benefits agreement. Uh, here's their response provided this afternoon. After approval of an economic development plan for the West End stadium, FCC would reach out to key stakeholders in the West End to meet for purposes of discussing a, uh, community benefits agreement. FCC anticipates it would hire a consultant to facilitate the process. Upon being awarded an MLS team, FCC would begin to meet with the West End group. The goal would be to complete the, the CBA by June 30, 2018. The focus of the CBA would be on the following. One, parking, traffic, safety, and other quality of life issues. Two, local hiring, economic inclusion, and supplier diversity. Three, creation of a community advisory council to facilitate regular communication. Four, input on site and stadium design for both new Stargel and the FCC MLS stadium. And five, FCC commitment to donate $100,000 annually for charitable support to neighborhood programs. Finally, FCC committed that no part of Taft High School will be affected as a result of the FCC stadium construction or the related infrastructure, and that there would be, and then there would be no material disruption of programming at Stargel Stadium as a result of the relocation. In my view, these proposed terms are consistent with the conditions set forth in the board's resolution dated March 21, 2018.
Thank you. Cincinnati Board of Education, we want to present the resolution approving exchange of property with FC Cincinnati.
Yes, um, thank you, President Jones. Uh, this is the Revised Cincinnati Public Schools Resolution approving exchange of property with FC Cincinnati. Whereas in January 2018, the Board of Education was approached by FC Cincinnati President Jeff Burding about the possibility of swapping property to facilitate the club's construction of a Major League Soccer stadium on the side of Stargel Stadium. And whereas Mr. Burding made a presentation to the Board of Education and the community at a public meeting held on February 12, 2018. And whereas the Board of Education made significant progress engaging the public about the FC Cincinnati proposal, including by inviting a public comment during Board of Education meetings, hosting a community meeting at Taft IT High School, and creating an electronic survey that generated 2,781 responses from the public, and whereas FC Cincinnati submitted a proposal to the Board of Education on March 7, 2018, outlining the terms of a land swap transaction. While CPS's board considered the proposal, it asked FC Cincinnati to respond to two questions. Number one, whether FC Cincinnati would agree to financially compensate CPS for the property taxes that would be payable on the increased value of the land and improvements comprising a new FC Cincinnati stadium. And number two, whether FC Cincinnati intended to enter into a community benefits agreement with representatives of the West End. And whereas FC Cincinnati and CPS engaged in a series of communications during which the terms of the proposed transaction was discussed. All of these communications were available to the public for review and comment. March 8, 2018, letter from FC Cincinnati advising that the club proposed payments in lieu of taxes, pilots, of $70,000 annually and intended to enter into a community benefits agreement with the City of Cincinnati.
March 10, 2018, FC proposal to pay $100,000 annually to pilots for the first two years, increasing to $500,000 annually in the second five years of occupancy. March 14, 2018, letter from FC Cincinnati making a final and best offer of $750,000 per year in pilots. Whereas the board declined each of these offers and advised FC Cincinnati's representatives that it would be willing to engage in a land exchange transaction provided FC Cincinnati was willing to meet the board's proposed terms, and...
Whereas on March 21, 2018, the Board of Education unanimously approved a resolution establishing the conditions upon which the board would agree to a land exchange. The conditions included FC Cincinnati agreeing to pay 25% of the total property taxes on the new stadium in accordance with the 1999 agreement, the negotiation and adoption of community benefits agreement, and the construction of a new Stargel stadium in accordance with the board's policies, and a partnership for expanded academic, athletic, internship, and employment opportunities for CPS students. And whereas on April 2, 2018, Mr. Burding invited CPS's Superintendent, Treasurer, and General Counsel to a meeting to discuss a proposal that was consistent with the board's resolution. And whereas on April 4, 2018, the Superintendent shared the proposed terms with the Board of Education during executive session. The verbal proposal was favorably received by the board. The board directed the Superintendent to contact Mr. Burding and request the verbal proposal to be committed to writing, and...
Whereas on April 5, 2018, FC Cincinnati drafted and sent a new proposal and term sheet consistent with the club's verbal proposal. The district's treasurer and general counsel have reviewed the proposed terms and find them to be consistent with the Board of Education's March 21st resolution. CPS publicly released the term sheet and timeline on April 6, 2018, and scheduled a public meeting on April 10, 2018 to consider the proposal. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education has reviewed the proposed terms and found them to be consistent with its March 21, 2018 resolution. In summary, the proposal includes the following. FC Cincinnati will make an advance lump sum pilot to CPS equal to 25% of the property taxes on the projected value of the FC Cincinnati stadium for the first 10 years. CPS and the club will commit to a reconciliation process based on the actual appraised value of the stadium after construction. After the first 10 years, FCC will make annual pilots consistent with the amounts due under the 1999 agreement.
By June 30, 2018, FC Cincinnati agrees that it will enter into a written community benefits agreement with the Coalition of Community Organizations and Residents in the neighborhood. FC Cincinnati agrees to construct a new Stargel Stadium at an anticipated cost of $10 million in accordance with CPS policies, and to establish a partnership with CPS that will provide for expanded academic, internship, and employment opportunities for Taft High School and CPS students. Be it further resolved that the Cincinnati Board of Education accepts the terms in FC Cincinnati's proposal and authorizes the treasurer to enter into a property exchange agreement that is consistent with the terms of FC Cincinnati's April 5, 2018 proposal. Can I get a, a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Comments or questions? Mrs. Twarick, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Aye.
Mrs. Fulton.
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby.
Aye.
Mr. Murawski.
Aye.
Mr. Timmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye. Motion carries. Resolution is approved. All right. Board? Having, having, having no other business to come before us, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.